...to residents of all backgrounds and stages of life. Redevelopment and improvement of a commercial site and adaptive reuse and sustainability. So, whoops. The key features already mentioned really are right, the primary use is the lodge, which is the shelter service, which again is referral only, targeted to single adults, non-congregates, and no one shares a room or bathroom. People stay thirty to ninety days at a time. Just our requirement to leave, we provide laundry on-site, we provide three meals a day for folks as well. There will be access control to the site and the building, and of course, staff twenty-four hours a day. The accessory uses of residences, which are twenty-five studio apartments for transitional living, these referrals would come from the lodge as sort of a next step. There will be a number of people that are going to work really hard in that thirty to ninety days, but they're going to have a lot of barriers to getting into long-term, permanent, stable housing. And so it's really important that we have sort of a next step for them to be able to go into. In particular, we often see this with people living on a fixed income, particularly our seniors a lot of times, who really need to be in a senior housing development that's going to be based on their income. And often those wait lists can be a year or two long. And so it's not a quick getting into that. We really want to make sure that we're able to get people connected to a long-term housing solution that's going to be sustainable for them, right? We don't want people rushing into a situation that they truly, really can't afford, and they're going to have a return right back to homelessness, which is what happens when they're not able to be connected to the right solution. So for the lodge, it would be the first and second floor. So the rooms in pink would be the rooms the, that guests would stay in. And of course, the purple are offices and support service offices and staff. You can see they're kind of scattered throughout the building purposely to put staff in kind of each of the different areas and hallways for folks. You'll enter into the property just as you would now, except it would have controlled access, you'd have to be let in by someone inside the building. The third floor would be the transitional housing units, which again would have those kitchenettes added to that, and then of course have additional case management offices and support services space. So how folks will come into the homeless services system, again, it is referral only, and it comes through the coordinated entry system. And this is really important in our community because we already have a system that is designed and has resources. It's important that people continue to start at that same point in that system. They receive an assessment, and they are, they're going to work with the person that does that assessment to figure out what's the right solution for them, right? The answer should not always be shelter for everyone, there needs to be a conversation, we need to understand the need. Sometimes you can divert from someone from homelessness if you ask the right questions, right? We may be able to get them connected back to a family member or to another resource that they may qualify for. If we just dump everyone into shelter and then try to figure it out later, we quickly fill up and then we have people out there, right? So it's important to follow that system. And so folks will still access, that will be the starting point. They will go to one of the four hubs, or call, an outreach worker can also conduct those with people in the community, or go to people to do those assessments. And so from that list of people, then, that's how we would receive referrals from the coordinated entry system. And again, those would be scheduled for move-ins, and transportation would be provided if folks didn't have a way to get there. So in terms of rules of conduct and guest expectations, there's a lot of them. There's about seven pages within thirty-one-page management plan around guest expectations. I've just highlighted a few of the kind of really important ones here. Folks do need to be medically stable, right, to be here. We are not a nursing care facility, we can't be providing that kind of care for folks. If they need that, we'll help them get connected to that. We do have a sign in and out process, we have a ten PM curfew, we ask people to engage with their case manager, and to attend community meetings. We will allow pets, and we have a pet policy, we expect everyone to abide by. And of course, the expectation is to maintain a violence, drug, alcohol, and weapon-free environment. And, you know, people are responsible for their own medications. Case management help them get access to medications that they need, but we're not giving people like medic their own, their medications. In terms of safety and security, this is really important to us, and I feel like we've put a lot of thought and attention to this. And it's important for the people staying with us as well. And we know it's important to the community, it's also important to our staff. So controlled access to the building is number one. It is so critical to really just have control of who's coming in and out of the building. So again, those gates will be installed, there are cameras interior and exterior that are monitored by staff twenty-four hours a day. And of course, those lighting upgrades will help as well. We will have trained staff on-site twenty-four hours a day. They conduct hourly walkthroughs of the building interior and exterior as well. And of course, the program rules and the curfew, bag searches every time someone enters the building, we do search them, and just are looking for, the message really gets across to people that we, this is, you do not bring drugs, alcohol, or weapons onto this property. And often we find that when people do have a weapon, it's usually they're carrying something to try to protect themselves, right? When they're on the street, they're not carrying something, they're not carrying guns, they may be carrying something that you may not even really consider a weapon, sometimes it's a tool. But we still don't allow those things, right? Of course, the sprinkler installation is a big safety and security thing for us. We would never want to operate a program like this in a building that doesn't have that life-saving situation. Of course, we have hot room protocols for people's personal items, so that is a room that everyone's items go into. If you churried restart, you could call our hot room. That's another really important thing, because we just want to make sure that that, it's just that everyone's stuff goes in there as a universal precaution to kill any kind of infestation of any kind. It's very difficult to treat, and we want people to be safe in that way as well. We have staff who are readily available, our clinical services team, as well as Johnson County Mental Health will be part of the, the team as well, to really create safety plans with folks who might be struggling with suicidal ideation or thoughts. Our staff receive a number of safety and security trainings, including an important de-escalation training, and CPR first aid, and trauma-informed care. Within the management plan, we have all the necessary emergency plans outlined. I won't go through any of them really, just to highlight here for you, the more detailed plan is in the management plan. We're accustomed to obviously handling these different types of situations and these plans. In terms of supportive services and partnerships, this is really important, right? For folks to be able to have access to the necessary services that they might need. And so the first one really starts with us, so providing that case man, those case management services, and access to educational and prevention activities, and like life skills and budgeting, and all employment services and all of those things. And so case management is really a key here, because the case manager is really a broker of services. And so they may not receive every service on-site, and we don't want people to receive every service on-site. We want them to get connected to services in the community that they can be connected to long-term, right? And so that's really important skill to be able to work with folks on. So we've provided a schedule and calendar of what those activities look like from our perspective, as well as when case management staff will be on-site, you know, really working with folks. The additional sort of supportive services provided by outside organizations include Johnson County Mental Health, Johnson County Community College, Health Partnership Clinic, and Workforce Partnership. And so those are really critical as well, but a lot of those will be provided off-site. Now, we don't know exactly what they're, what the on-site may look like, but those are the additional sort of icing on the cake. We, Restart will be maintaining the majority of the supportive services on a day-to-day operation, as well as we have other organizations that will often say, can we come in and do a program, right? Can we come in and offer this? So some of those things will change and ever grow within, as the program grows and changes. So I think that's a really important thing to remember, and these four organizations have provided letters of commandment saying, we're in, we will provide, you know, both on and off-site programs and access to services for people. So in terms of the staffing plan, so the operational hours have been declared as Monday through Friday from eight AM to six PM. And so by code, during those operational hours for fifty people, we need to provide a minimum of six staff, which we have committed to providing six to nine staff during that time, it varies throughout the day, sort of the hours of, in which people will be there, and we provided sort of that hourly breakdown. In the evening, that shifts a little bit outside of the operational hours, and we, you know, have agreed to provide five to six staff during the evening hours, and staff supported at least five during that time. And for overnight, we committed to four staff, and staff supported and requested four staff during that time. So, of course, you know, varying types of positions from our director to manager to case managers to our guest support services and counselor techs are really the folks that are there in that sort of twenty-four-hour-a-day capacity, housekeeping, maintenance. The additional outside service providers are not really factored into this, other than we sort of have one line in there for that during operational hours, that would be filled by varying people, including our additional staff from Restart during that time. The transportation plan, so we do believe this plan is a viable transportation plan. The site is centrally located, and it's closest to the best public transit options in Johnson County. And while I wish I could fix the public transit problems all across this metro, I cannot, but we are definitely willing to be an advocate and partner in helping do that. Our case managers do provide ninety percent of the transportation for folks. They will get them to and from, as they're coming into the program, as they're exiting the program, as they're looking for housing, as they're applying for jobs, as they're needing to get important documents, go to appointments, get connected to employment services. And about, we see about ten percent of guests have their own transportation. As I said, the intakes will be scheduled, and of course, guests may use public transit. Microtransit is also available, and that does provide additional regional access, which is also really important. And I already mentioned the case managers, the transportation for employment, while we wish we could take everyone to their job every day, it's not a viable option for us. So, but case managers work very closely with people, A, when they are looking for employment, where they may potentially want to live eventually is important in that factor, as well as transportation. The case managers are going to work one-on-one with people to develop a transportation plan, right? Like what's your, how are you going to plan to make sure that you can get to and from this job every day? And those things can include public transit, private transportation, even ride share. So Ride Share does pick up guests from Restart every Saturday, and Microtransit has also said they will absolutely pick up riders from this location. At the Johnson County Transit Strategic Planning Process begins in early 2025, and they're committed, and they provided a letter that's also in the packet to working through, you know, additional needs or making recommendations about allocating additional resources in the future to continue to improve transit access. Thing important to note here too is that folks who utilize public transit are used to living their lives around a transit schedule. And for a lot of us who've never had to do that, it's, it may seem like, since not a lot of transit options available, this will never work, right? Because we don't have to do it every day. But we see people every day who utilize public transit, and they have done it their whole life, most of them. And so they are accustomed to having to adjust what time they have to leave for work, what time they have to leave for appointment, when does the bus schedule run, what does that look like? And so I think that's a really important thing to keep in mind when looking at the transportation plan as well. In terms of the communication plan, we provided, of course, a crisis communication plan, as well as an external communication plan that we do believe is sufficient to stay connected to the community around us. We, of course, met with the business community multiple times, and the chambers of commerce in both Lenexa and Oberlin Park, and we plan to be members of those chambers, as we are in Kansas City, and be actively involved, and for those businesses to know us, and for us to know them, and keep those lines of communication open. For the neighborhood, we have hosted a number of meetings, we hosted two targeted ones, and of course, two larger ones across Johnson County as well. And so we propose, you know, to stay in contact with those neighbors and businesses by also having a monthly open house. We do this in Kansas City. Once a month, every one in any one of the communities welcome to just show up. We offer a tour, and conversation, and coffee, and it's a great time to be able to, A, learn more, or if you have questions or concerns. And we set up an email as well for folks to be able to stay in contact with us, to reach us, of course, folks can call or come by as well. We've committed to ongoing meetings and communication with Lenexa and Oberlin Park Police Departments, and including having a dedicated liaison that will work closely with the police department. Outreach workers will also maintain strong business connections with businesses in the area and law enforcement, and that's another really important key factor, because we want the businesses to have a relationship with us and with the straight outreach workers. So if they ever have an issue or a concern, or, you know, or have someone that keeps coming around that they, you know, want to know, it's, you know, have us check on them, it's a, it's a much more usable resource to rely upon than calling 911, right? We want them to utilize community resources that are already available and that are expanding in Johnson County to be able to address that. I already mentioned the membership with the chambers. Okay, so to address some of the staff concerns, as shared previously, you know, we did have nine meetings, three rounds of comments, we shared a sort of timeline document. The concerns raised were not raised until the report came out. And so around the neighborhood concerns, around law, the need for increased law enforcement concerns, so there's no way we could have began to address those until we knew that they were a concern. As far as it being inconsistent with the neighborhood, we've already sort of touched on that this is allowable in this district with a special use permit. Feel like the impact to that is minimal to thirteen businesses. The Homeless Services Center will be investing three point three million dollars in improvements to the site. And again, the nature of the hotel and the Homeless Services Center is very similar. When we held a business meeting, we also heard from businesses who said they have lost business currently because of encounters with people experiencing homelessness. And so that's really important too, because as long as folks don't have a place to go, that kind of impact is only going to increase for businesses. And so several businesses really saw this as an opportunity to be able to, they recognized that folks didn't have anywhere to go. And so they saw this as an opportunity to have a place for people to go. And several of the nearby businesses were excited to hire people, they said they have positions open that they cannot hire for, and were already interested in working with us. In terms of the issues raised here, we have offered a number of accommodations to the city that were declined, including setting aside money from a funder to help local enforcement, including establishing a community improvement district that we would fund with roamers who could be in the neighborhood, really addressing issues and things that are coming up. And so we definitely come to this in wanting to, as we have through this whole process, there's a compromise to be made. And so whatever the concerns are, there's a way that we can mitigate those. We unfortunately just didn't know about it, so we couldn't throw out the ideas to mitigate those until just recently. Again, the Project Ten Twenty is a cold weather shelter, it does promote drop-offs and walk-ups. It's a totally different type of operation. And I will share with you that our current location in Kansas City, Missouri, we are referral-based, and we do not have a problem with others dropping people off at our shelter. Now, we've been operating that way for a while, and so the community knows, people know, surrounding area knows, law enforcement knows that this is how the project works. And so we believe what we have seen will absolutely be replicated in what we see here. It's going to be important that we have strong communication and messaging out to the community about how the, how the entry does work. And so we do believe that there will be minimal types of activity like that at this location. In terms of law enforcement resources, not having an answer for people is very expensive. It costs eighteen times more to just only have an emergency response to people experiencing homelessness. And so even that response doesn't often solve their homelessness. In the data that we were able to capture, there were about point eight four calls per day to the current location as an, as a hotel operator. Restart actual data reflects about point eight six calls per day, and we have about a hundred and fifty people in our building. We're proposing obviously fifty percent less people in this building, so if we were to apply that logic, we'd be at point four three calls per day, which is less than what's currently happening at the hotel. And so we feel like there is not going to be a need for increased law enforcement. However, we understand the concern, which is why we've offered to funding to help offset that, if that is what happens. The non-congregate shelter style obviously reduces calls, as I mentioned before, having twenty-four hours a day trained staff is also important and very different from Project Ten Twenty. And so we really believe that the data supports that there would be no change, actually a reduction in law enforcement. And I really appreciate the shared, the story that Chief shared about Officer Hinkle, and we know that there are officers doing amazing work in this community every day, and the CIT training that they employ is really critical and important. And I think it's important to note that while that is really important, if there was a center like this, Officer Hinkle wouldn't have had to take as much time as he did on that call, right? Because that person could have been in the center, and he could have been responding to other more emergent calls that are needed in the community. So I think it's important to reflect upon the gains that a community has by having a center like this. You, you, you may shift resources in some way, but you're not necessarily increasing the need for resources. In terms of uncertainty in the management plan, we feel that the plan, that all the components are, that are required and needed and necessary are included in that. Again, in the services, we've provided a schedule and staffing roles and plans and what that looks like. The budget information, we have happily obliged to providing hundreds and hundreds of pages of documents through this process, because it's been important to us that the city staff and that the community really understand this project. We didn't have to hold any community meetings, but we held six, because we wanted people to know, to have the right information. And so I think it's really important to note that within that, we did provide a ten-year budget and pro forma, the first year of operating funds are guaranteed and provided, and understanding the nature of nonprofits. There's not a nonprofit in this country that can sit here and tell you their exact funding source in three years. It just doesn't work that way. We have annually, we are seeking and searching funding. I think it's important to note that Restart has a forty-four-year history of raising those funds to keep programs operating and to keep expanding programs. So we're very capable of doing that. We've applied a very diversified funding strategy to this project on purpose, because that's what we've learned in forty-four years, is that you can't put all your eggs in one basket, right? You need to diversify where your money's coming from and what that looks like. And the transitional housing units would generate some additional income that would also help to sustain that budget. And over half of the cities across Johnson County have been early adopters and have committed and pledged their funding for operating support to this project. The larger communities are waiting for this approval, and they're ready to take up the matter upon the approval of this project. It's been noted a couple times that there's a deficit in the budget. There's not a deficit in the budget, that's the funding strategy, right? Is diversify the money we're asking for that contribution, we've been asking from, from day one, to say that this is how you, you know, create a program with a diversified funding strategy. In terms of transportation, we do feel like that plan has been satisfied. We will be providing the majority of that transportation. Again, I cannot fix all of Johnson County's public transportation challenges, but we know that Johnson County Transit stands ready to be a part of that as well. In communication, we feel like we have a strong plan to be able to stay in touch and have open lines of communication with both businesses, neighborhoods, and of course, law enforcement. So why vote yes to this special use permit? We believe this is the right time and the right solution. Living outside is dangerous. It is dangerous for the people living outside, it is dangerous to our community, to our overall vitality. It is allowable by zoning, and we believe this project does meet typicals and has minimal impact. The hotel and shelter both provide interim housing solutions, but our proposed use, while remains similar, we have, we are proposing way more staff, security, and resources than current operations. It would create an amazing public partnership and have the opportunity to be able to really address homelessness and put us on a path to ending homelessness in Johnson County. We believe there is a strong comprehensive management plan with twenty-four-hour operation, is secure, run by trained professional staff, and we have strong community partners for additional wraparound services. Ninety percent of the people from our program has exited to safe and stable housing. We know what we're doing, and our goal is to get people housed. We do not want to put a Band-Aid on people every day and send them right back out into the community. Our goal is an exit to safe, stable housing, which oftentimes includes getting a better job. We know that from the data, there are, there are more than half the people in Johnson County who are experiencing homelessness on the street today who have a job. This is about being able to help people find the right housing solution and match their income to what that looks like. Again, we, we stand ready to continue to offer the accommodations to help mitigate the concerns of city staff and to work through those solutions. We have submitted a request for a reasonable accommodation, and we respectfully request that the city council approve this special use permit submitted by Restart under the Fair Housing Act as a reasonable accommodation for individuals with disabilities who will benefit from the services provided by Restart. We ask that you please consider this special use permit based on the merit of the application and the project versus speculation, or what if this happens? We stand ready to mitigate those concerns. if this happens. We stand ready to mitigate those concerns today and as being a partner in this project and in this community on any concerns that may arise in the future.
We are going to start the public comment period now. Let's go until 9:45, at which time we will take our recess for a break. If I can, please, I'd like to review how we will conduct the public comment period. The speaking order will be displayed on the screens, and the speakers next in line will be announced by city staff. When your name is called and displayed as next in line, please queue in the aisle behind the podium. I will recognize you to speak when you are ready. Each person will have two minutes to share their comments, and you're using the digital timer at the end of the dice to enforce that time limit. At the end of your time, you will need to please sit down. Please begin wrapping up your comments before the two-minute mark. Speakers are being asked to identify whether they live or have business in Lenexa and will be heard in order as they register according to the following parameters. Individual Lenexa residents and business owners will be given priority to go first. Attendees who are not from Lenexa or those who did not wish to disclose that information will be heard after residents and business owners. We will accept a total of two hours of public comment tonight or the end of our list, whichever comes first. At the end of two hours, the public comment period will be closed, and no further comments will be accepted. All questions and comments should be directed to the City Council, as this is not a debate between the public, the applicant, the City Council, or staff. You will note that questions or concerns are raised during the public comment period, and we will respond or will ask the staff or applicant to respond to as many of the questions and concerns as we are reasonably able to at the conclusion of the public comment period. Please note that certain questions may not be able to be answered this evening. Please let me reiterate that we reviewed detailed minutes of the planning commission meeting and have read all the correspondence that was submitted on this item. Please do your best to refrain from duplicating comments. We have received hundreds of pages of correspondence from the public and understand that there are many opinions on this issue. Our job is to take these considerations in totality and weigh them with the criteria for review of city code and state law. We want to hear all perspectives on this matter, and your cooperation and participation in making things go as quickly and efficiently as possible is appreciated. Because it is clear that we definitely need to be in a light lane. While we need, we will plan to take breaks, as I mentioned, for every two hours for about 10 minutes. Mike, please call the first speaker.
Sir, Mayor, we're going to take the baseball approach tonight. The first speaker out is Renee Loyah, on deck, Hannah Jeffrey, and Marilyn Beaverton.
My name is Renee Loyah. I have lived in Lenexa for 30 years, and I'm a member of the Good Faith Network. Right now, across 30 communities in Johnson County, the church, the synagogue, and the mosque, the Good Faith Network is conducting its annual listening process, hearing over 700 Johnson County residents talk about how homelessness in this community is affecting them or someone they love. In all these spaces, our members own up to an uncomfortable truth: Johnson County is built on exclusion. Historically restricted covenants kept minorities out of many communities in Johnson County, denying access to populations deemed too risky for investment. Exclusion is the legacy we have inherited. We didn't create this history, but it's our responsibility to change it. To do that, we, as a city, have to set aside bold thinking and step forward in bold leadership. Good Faith Network prayerfully asks this council to consider the notion that the homeless services center is inconsistent with the character of its model. The property is on a diverging diamond intersection with an arterial street and an interstate. The neighborhood consists of an abandoned denny's, some auto parts stores, and a car wash. It is currently operating as a low-cost hotel on a corner already saturated with lodging options. However, if you cram the S U P, the property will be transformed, not just by the physical improvements that Restart will bring, but by offering a unique and desperately needed service to the people of this community. It will enhance the character of the neighborhood and of Lenexa itself. So let's rewrite history tonight. Let's break the cycle of exclusion by welcoming Restart into Lenexa. I urge you to act in courageous leadership and approve the special use permit tonight. Thank you.
Prose, my name is Hannah Jeffrey.
The next speaker is Hannah Jeffrey, followed by David Pack and Denise Clark.
And I'll run you two places. If you are on deck, please feel free to wind up behind my person speaking.
My name is Hannah Jeffrey. I live in Lenexa in Ward 4, and I'm a member of the Good Faith Network. I live about a mile and a half from the site of the Future Homeless Services Center. My daughters play at Trafalgar and Flat Park Creek and Rose Hill Parks. When the HSC opens at 95th and I-35, my family will be safe. They will be safe just like they've always been safe when we volunteer together at Project 1020. They will be safe just like they've always been safe when we worship alongside people experiencing homelessness at my church. We are safe because our unhoused neighbors are not dangerous. The city report might have you conclude otherwise, particularly the impact analysis of the Restart shelter on public safety and mental health. Respectfully, Good Faith Network maintains that the report is not an apples-to-apples analysis, which has impacted its conclusions. Nonetheless, the conclusions of the report that additional law enforcement officers would be necessary if the HSC opens informs the planning commission's recommendations on August 26. However, things have changed since then. Johnson County wants to deepen the partnership with the city of Lenexa, so we celebrate the county's pledge voted on last Thursday to provide additional service by the sheriff's office's crisis intervention team-trained deputies and increase mental health corresponders to address the potential for increased calls for law enforcement support. Kudos to the county for hearing the city of Lenexa's concerns and formulating a solution that resolves one of the key issues raised by the city staff report. CIT officers and corresponders are exactly the type of law enforcement presence to support the HSC. With this new development designed specifically to address Lenexa's concerns, the Good Faith Network urges this council to feel confident in approving the special use permit. Thank you.
The next speaker is David Pack, followed by Denise Clark and Kevin Butler.
So I'm David Pack. I live at 12645 West 82nd Street in Ward 3, Lenexa. I've lived there for 34 years. I strongly urge the council to support the application to establish a homeless services center in the former La Quinta Inn. My wife Karen joins me in urging your support for the HSC. We are 34-year members of Grace Covenant Presbyterian Church in Overland Park. Our church is a host church in the Johnson County Interfaith Hospitality Network. Our church building houses up to 15 homeless guests for a full week, four times a year. The church has done this about 80 times over a 20-year period. Housing homeless guests means they are in temporary bedrooms in our church building from about 5:00 PM until 6:30 the next morning. They are always two church members in the building when our guests are there, talking to them, eating dinner with them, sleeping in a room next to where they are sleeping. For seven years, Karen and I were the primary coordinators of this ministry, having extended contact with homeless persons for a full week, four times a year. Never once did we or other members of our church ever feel threatened or mistreated by our guests, not once. So we urge you not to oppose the HSC based on false beliefs about homeless persons who would live there temporarily. Restart would screen potential residents, as the Johnson County Interfaith Hospitality Network staff screens them for us. Could these people be a safer group of people than the drug dealers and the sex traffickers passing through on I-35? I believe they would. We encourage you to vote based on caring for people, not on an unjustified fear of homeless people. Please help people in need to regain their independent living status. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Denise Clark, followed by Kevin Butler and Jennifer Girdor.
I live in Lenexa, but in 2002, I was on a task force for Mayor Barnes, worked with the city council, the Kansas City, Missouri Police Department, excuse me, to remedy the issue of kids on the streets in Westport. Do you remember that? Our ministry was, we had a church in Westport that offered their building festival workout of reality kids to help them. And little did I know, I'd worked with couch kids, so I was familiar with that. I did not know how many homeless in the area we would also have to deal with. We encountered homeless individuals in the area who were trying to sober extra kids, charging people money to park in the church parking lot. We found packets of cocaine on the church floor. They were urinating, defecating, and having sex around the neighborhood in broad daylight. There was much stealing and breaking into shops, fighting, and causing havoc. It was actually a drive-by shooting at the end of the street because they were all fighting. One day, one man passed out in the middle of the street. I called an ambulance. The ambulance driver said, "Yeah, we pick him up every night, take him to hospital, bring me back." One young man I was trying to help, which I thought was harmless, he told me, I said, "Paul, what are you doing?" He said, "I'm thinking about killing someone." I said, "Why would you do that?" He said, "Just to see how it feels." I told him, "Well, it hurts, and you would never do this because you're a kind of gentleman. You would never hurt anyone." He smiled and said, "Yeah, you're right." It would prevent a homicide that day. But my point is, I thought he was a nonviolent, harmless person, and he was not. It was shocking. Anyway, we knew there were shelters downtown, so we went to check them out. The facilities were decent and had good food. We noticed things were different, though, outside. We saw in broad daylight, right next to my car, a man giving a woman a few dollars, and they laid down in a bush. Is my time up? Oh, dear. I've got so much to share about what works and what doesn't work. My question is, though, tell us who's coming into the shelter. Are they just poor people that are moral and just need help out, or are they deep-michelle people that will cause problems?
Thank you. Speaker number five is Kevin Butler, followed by Jennifer Girdor, followed by Marilyn Velazquez.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to address our city council on the issue of the future Lenexa Homeless Service Center, which is so important to our community and our residents in need of assistance in receiving housing that gives them and the community around them better lives than they do now. My name is Kevin Butler. I'm a member of the Good Faith Network and a member of the Village Presbyterian Church in Prairie Village. Most recently, I have lived in Lenexa for the past three years. However, my extended family and I have been long-term residents of Johnson County going back to our childhood. My wife and I graduated from Shawnee Mission West High School nearly 50 years ago. My family and I, as well as many of our neighbors, support the development of the Future Homeless Service Center in an extended neighborhood, and know of no better location for this project in the city of Lenexa. I have a friend that experienced long-term homelessness, and he told me that homeless shelters were a short-term comfort for him, but those who assisted him with receiving freedom from drug addiction, returning to formal education, and providing him with job opportunities will all lead to turning his life around. I hope that that will be the type of service that we can provide when the Homeless Service Center becomes operational. The Johnson County Mental Health Department, the Johnson County Community College and Health Partnership, and Workforce Partnership have all provided a letter of support and voiced commitment to the Lenexa Homeless Service Center project. Our community can provide morally and socially just examples of just how to assist and lift up those unfortunate people who are homeless rather than contribute to the perpetuation of their personal misery and disblight on our society. At planning commission meetings, more people speak in favor of this project than against it, and we are seriously concerned that the council unanimously voted against it. We truly hope the city council will show courage and take the moral high ground to provide this service to those in need and receive more responses to the public will. Thank you very much for considering our position.
The next speaker is Jennifer Girdor, followed by Marilyn Velazquez, followed by Jack Gregory.
My name is Marilyn, Dr. Marilyn Deemer Velazquez. I'm a small, adult veteran Marion, mama of three kids, seven years married to my high school sweetheart, investor in Alex, three-and-a-half-year Lenexa homeowner, and lifetime resident of Johnson County. I'm speaking in favor of the Homeless Service Center. I live less than a mile from the proposed site and 95th Street and I-35. My oldest child attends Rose Hill Elementary less than a mile from the site. I have no fear for her safety should the center open. I have two separate friends my age who have experienced temporary homelessness within the past few years. Their names are Jaden and Tony. They were scared, lost, and alone. I felt lost not being able to physically help them from so many miles away. I wish they each had access to a shelter like this. They did not. Their road to find stable, affordable housing was much more arduous than it needed to be. A place like this will help people like Jaden and Tony who just need some stability and safety, not only from environmental hardships, but from mental, financial, and emotional ones as well. These neighbors without housing in our community are our children, siblings, parents, family members, and friends. They are you and me. We are each of us just a few months away from a string of financial hardships that result in our being homeless. We can't turn our back on them and pretend they don't exist. They do exist. We can instead actively love them by providing a safe haven that will also provide further resources to help them turn a way forward. This facility will provide that for our neighbors without housing, right here in Johnson County. I don't choose to live my life motivated by fear. I choose to live my life motivated by active love. I am teaching my kids to live this way, too. This is the kind of community I want my kids to grow up in. I want Lenexa to be a community of love for all of our neighbors. I challenge each of you to help make that a reality.
I apologize. You got a little bit off track there, Marilyn. I'm sorry about that. Here's Jennifer Girdor. She's not with us this evening. He will be in with Jack Gregory next, followed by Marilyn Beaverton, followed by Linda Gallagher.
After Mr. Gregory, I'll see you tomorrow.
Sounds good.
Thank you. My name is Jack Gregory. Marilyn and I are retired clergy. We live at Lakewood Village, and I'm speaking in support of the Homeless Service Center. We live close to Lakewood. We also live close to Project 1020. We have no fear for our safety. We worked part-time at Lenexa United Methodist Church for five years before we moved to Lenexa. We've lived in Lenexa for three years now, and during that time, we sought homeless people. We handed out opportunities for people to live for a day, for lodging for a night, for temporary assistance. We also worked with Hill Press Transitional Housing. We learned that there's opportunity when you're involved in a program that wants to transition people from homelessness back into self-attaining persons in society. According to our city's comprehensive plan, our city promotes attainable housing and wants to provide housing for all people. That is, we want to welcome residents at all stages of life with all abilities. Welcoming comes with a cost. We know that. Our first day on the job at Lenexa UMC, Mayor Mike Main welcomed us. We are a welcoming city. We worked in congregations where we were taught that welcoming all means all. There are risks. We understand that. There are 24% growth in homeless persons. But I would invite you to hear tonight the assets that come from Restart, from what's being offered to us through the county. Yes, with risk comes opportunities. We haven't gotten where we are as a city without taking risks. I want to thank you for what you've done and for your time tonight. We can do this. Let's trust each other and trust our medicines.
Ms. Anderson? You have a mobility issue. Come on up, and then we'll take a break out of this one, please.
Thank you. Hello. My name is Marilyn Anderton, and I have lived for 11 years at 8935 Cottonwood Street, about a mile from the proposed site. I am so happy to be wholeheartedly in support of this wonderful innovative project. It enjoys broad support. I know that the public I know that the public supports it. I know that many officials support this. I believe that perhaps we hesitate because we're not sure what will happen. But Restart has done its homework. Restart has conducted diligent research and extensive planning, and their efforts show that this site is good for the purpose which they propose. I urge you to approve this special use permit because you will open the door of opportunity for homeless persons who are seeking to improve their lives and become productive members of society.
Thank you. With that, we will be back in possibly ten minutes. Thank you.
I'm okay.
I'm fine.
How about you?
Something you disagree on?
The city council decided to support Trump, you know? Said they support Trump? War, that's a very good example.
War is a bad thing to spend tax money on.
I object to that. I object to meddling in other people's affairs. Somebody were to attack us, maybe on our soil, I'd be all in support of it. I'm just an individual. Yeah, the room, anyway. If you like the way it looks.
Oh, I'm gonna lose my ride.
Have a nice night. Are they kicking this out?
Just a break.
The light's going on.
I think that's what it stands for.
Well, my city, they do that when people stay around talking to council too late after the meetings. I'm from Marion, yourself?
I'm from Shawnee.
Shawnee? So I'm not the only evil interloper from other cities, voying in their two cents.
Are you covering this?
Just for the public, not a newspaper thing, but... I mean, I don't have to point at the two if you don't want to. But I cover public meetings all over the county, usually in northeast Jopco.
Nice, you have like an Instagram?
No, just public meetings, I need to. About the most boring sounding Chandler.
But it's important.
Yeah, it is important. There are some city council meetings where people don't show up, believe it or not. I've been going to my city council meeting religiously since 2015, almost a year now.
Can I ask like what inspired you to start working?
Going to city council?
Yeah, I started working for all of them also.
Starting what?
Like started working for them.
Oh, well, those are two different things. I started going because I bought my first house, well, actually it wasn't my second, but my first like real house that was worth like a lot of money. And it was in a mixed-living neighborhood, so I thought, I'm in Libya, I'm gonna participate. And I did, and I was on the board. I was the president for five years, I was on the board for seven or eight. And before I was president, we didn't have any idea what we were doing. Our meetings were run bananas. Like there were like cats like underneath the table and kids swearing in the basement playing video games. So I wanted to have a more professional meeting, and so I went to city council to witness a professional meeting. Hard hard, right? Although actually usually it's okay, it's usually okay. Started on the parks board for my city for a while. I chaired that board for a while, and I learned some like good meeting skills and whatever. And then I kind of just became interested in the city stuff. So most of our tax money is going to the city. You know, so, or to the local government, just county whites. People overlook how much is on our tax bill every year. And I know this is not like a terrible thing, it's really like one of the nicer things to spend tax money on, but it's just too far, in my opinion. And, and charity should come from the heart. You know, like when I go grocery shopping and I come home, and I'm on the way home, I see somebody homeless, I'll stop and I'll give them something for my groceries. You know, food I would have eaten myself. I will give it to them to help them out. Some folks have enough money, they can give a lot to support, and they do. And there's like three or four charitable networks in, in Johnson County. There's Salvation Army, there's Christian Charity Cafeteries, I think it is. There's a few.
Saying basically you want your private charity to fill the gap instead of like public charities.
Correct. I want people that they support this to donate their own money and support it. I've memorized the donate link for Restart. I have a bookmark that I can share with people if you'd like to.
No, that's cool, but...
If you, if you go to the Restart website, there's a button on a couple pages deep where people can donate.
Very interesting perspective, thanks for sharing.
Your podcast or something too?
Oh, no, I'm a major in the NPR station here, so I discovered this on podcast radio.
Awesome, awesome. So basically podcasting, before podcasting was called podcasting.
Basically, and now we mostly do podcasts, because that's where the industry is headed. Yeah, so I got into these things, and you know, very big deal to like stay super neutral on all discussions and just document it, but I think it's really cool hearing people's perspectives. I do really appreciate as a Johnson County, I do really appreciate what matters to people. I think that the first speaker said like reasonable people can have like different perspectives on this, and it's good to see that process play out.
Yeah, we don't need to yell at people, you know? I'm not even against the idea of the shelter. It's just a tag. You know, like, and arguably that makes sense, the wrong meeting to speak at for me, because this is about zoning, and I think if they had the money to just buy it on their own and do it, thumbs up, do it, enjoy it. I genuinely hope it works well, sure it will. But yeah. Our taxes are high in Johnson County.
Thanks for having me.
See you here. Do you get to be one of the speakers tonight?
Oh, no.
No? I didn't realize you had to sign up in advance. This is the first, uh, first council meeting I've seen where they did that.
No, that is how I'm wasting my time. I guess did that online.
Did that online?
Yeah, with side looking at things.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they have a nice chambers though, I'll tell you. Are you from Lenexa? Oh, you work at the city council for the city?
Yes. I'm with the planning commission. I'm helping out tonight.
The public works guy was out there, I guess, man of the, man of the death.
Yeah.
He's, he said he could hear me, I was talking too loud. Did you hear me earlier? Okay. I think, I thought he was bullshitting. So I was, I was talking about... No, actually less than that, because I'm competing with all this knowledge. It's mostly quiet out there, and I was talking to a lady on the other side of that like entryway over there, and what's his name? He, he wrote down his name for me. Nick Arina came up and tapped into the shoulder and said I was talking too loud. He said, he said I was talking too loud, they can hear me through the doors. I don't know why I didn't tell them to then close the doors. But honestly, that wouldn't be a bad suggestion. I think the space out there would be ideal to let people talk amongst each other during meetings. If you close the doors, you're not gonna hear, for sure, even like at a normal war, you know?
I think for them out there, they want to hear what was going on here.
Oh, the people out there want to hear it.
Yes, they wanted to hear it through people, since they do have enough people here.
Do you notice Lenexa mute public comment, and it's livestream and it's reported in the areas of that meeting? No? Okay, that's cool. Much respect. Mike Kelly's...
I did the minutes for the meeting.
No?
Found the reports, secretary Terry, for their reading.
It has to be fun.
And it was, there was a lot of pages of comments, and all of the kind of...
So I, you might be the best person to ask then. I, I noticed the agenda for this meeting was five hundred, no, three hundred and twenty-eight megabytes? I have never in my life seen that large of a file. And I looked at it to try to figure out why it's so large, and it was the, um, the public comments were images, not text. Is there a reason for that? There is, I thought there was, enlightening.
Because it was best, and this is how I did it, is how I cheated it. It's like to put it all in a document, print it out, sheet by sheet, to take out all the comments.
Oh, for, for deduplicating.
Yeah, well, some people, well, it would come in from different people. It may come from different counties. So we didn't want the same one.
The same comment seven times, yeah. And then...
Then taken out for duplicates and scanned in.
I, I noticed a lot of form letters in government, like, or a lot of, when people want to petition for or against something, a lot of folks use form letters. All these damn signs except mine were photocopied. I took the time to customize it. I'm not sure they liked that I customized it, but whatever. Yeah. So is there, is there a process the government uses to like, say this form letter was used by seventy-one people, or, no? It just basically counts as one input or less? That's what I thought. That's why I customized. I don't use no damn form letters. And I trim my shit down when somebody, so I do get those emails saying, send this letter to your senator, send this letter to your... And if I do agree with what they're saying, I'll still, I'll trim it down to the point that mattered to me, put it in my own words. Sorry, just wanted to read the sign. I think charity should come from the heart, not the fist. And tax money is taken by fist, by force. You know, if you don't pay your taxes, you'll find out real quick, the sheriff will, you know, remove you. So I'd like to help people donate. They, they do have a website, a webpage on Restart's page for personal donations from individuals. I'd like it to be successful based on those donations and donations alone. I don't think the location's the problem really, so maybe this is the wrong meeting to be at, but, uh, but the funding of it is problematic, I think. Because they're using, they're using local, they're trying to get money from every city. I'm gonna get hit by my own camera. They're taking, they're taking money from every city, from the county. I'm surprised not from the state, but the federal as well is putting money in, so... Anyone seen these two? I know you from somewhere.
I know you from the library.
JCL?
My name is Linda Gallagher. I live at seven-eight-zero-four Monrovia Street in Ward Four, I'm sorry, Ward Three. As a forty-two-year Lenexa resident, I was extremely disappointed when the planning commission voted not to recommend the SUP for the proposed Housing Services Center. I am a former state representative for Kansas House District Twenty-Three, and this property is located in my former legislative district. I have campaigned door-to-door in these neighborhoods. I know that area, and I believe this center would fit well in it. Upgrading a property that is currently not in good condition and providing much-needed community services. I also believe that people living in this center would not pose any threat to area residents. I am disgusted by the misinformation that has been spread on that. I work as a social services administrator with the Kansas Department for Children and Families. The Overland Park DCA office where I am based is just five blocks north of the Lakinta Inn site. For my job, I regularly attend meetings of the Johnson County Continuum of Care on Homelessness and other social service agencies. So I am knowledgeable about the homeless population here, their demographics, and the barriers they face getting back on their feet. This project is our best opportunity to address homelessness and to provide wraparound services for this population. The federal pandemic funding being used for this project provides an opportunity that won't likely happen again for many years. I respectfully ask that you be forward-thinking and grant the special use permit for this project. I trust Restart to get this right. I am also involved with the Good Faith Network, which is supporting this project. In a recent sermon, my senior pastor David Livingston preaching on social justice said, "If it isn't good for the poor, it isn't justice." This project is good for the poor, and if it isn't approved, neither justice nor the homeless will be served. Thank you.
The next speaker is Evie Craig, followed by Jim Grant and then Laura Owen.
Thank you. I know I'm running out of time, but I spilled coffee, I'm gonna, I'll take care of that, but it was coffee bought in Lenexa, so. So my name is Evie Craig, and my husband Tom and I have lived at two-oh-nine-zero-seven Whispering Drive in the wonderful Ward, one since nineteen ninety-nine. And I'd like to express my pride that the city of Lenexa stepped up to allow Project Ten Twenty to operate the county's only cold weather shelter for our neighbors experiencing homelessness. But a cold weather shelter, no matter how great it is, with a limited capacity, is not the solution to the growing problem of homelessness in our community. The proposed homeless services center includes shelter, a coordinated entry system, security, and wraparound services provided by professionals with a path to housing. Johnson County's homeless are not strangers. They are moms, dads, sisters, brothers, friends, and veterans who have lived, worked, gone to school, and paid taxes in our city and county. While the number of persons experiencing homelessness has increased over the past few years, it is still a small enough scope that we can solve this. The city of Lenexa prides itself on being an effective, innovative, and innovative problem solver. With your support of the homeless services center, we can solve the problem of homelessness in a way that ensures better futures for all of us. I think that Stephanie did such a great job of addressing some of the staff comments and issues concerns, and I won't belabor that because I did have some comments on that, but I just wanted to highlight that the mixed-use zoning...